Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Mr. Clerk, would you please take roll call?
Dave Abdullah.
Here.
Bill Bazey.
Here.
Robert Constant.
Here.
Lisa Hicks Clayton.
Here.
Denise Milonowski Maxwell.
Here.
Ray Muscat.
Here.
Tom Wenzel.
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a call.
Thank you. Tonight, I'd like to ask Brian Stout, a Wayne State University Journalism student, to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Okay, next, we have Agenda Approval. Madam Chair. Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to approve the Order of Business September 25, 2018, regular meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council as presented.
Support.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next, we have approval of the minutes. We have, first of all, minutes from the regular meeting of September 11, 2018.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Constant.
I move that the minutes from the regular meeting of September 11 and the special meeting of September 18 is outlined in 4A and B. Be approved.
Second. Okay, that is moved by Councilman Constant and supported by Councilwoman Hicks Clayton. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next, we have public hearing and comment on agenda items. We ask that you keep it to agenda-only items. In the end, there is a special section where you can make regular, just random comments or during the public announcements. You have a two-minute limit. State your name and address.
My name is Joe Hashem. I live on 26560 Wilson Drive. I have a concern about item 9F. The council body last time clearly stated that the council will do a study session as soon as possible. It has not happened. The residents of the city of Dearborn Heights deserve the truth and accurate numbers. Item 9F is misleading and does not bring back $117,000 to the general fund. Actually, in reality, it is off by more than 50 percent. Just want the public to know that. I urge city council members to address and table this item.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councilman Abdullah?
No.
Oh. Here we go.
I want to talk about the Charter, the veto power of the mayor. I would like to read what the Charter said.
Okay.
Section 713.
That's going to be addressed. We will be doing that ourselves.
I know.
Okay, go ahead.
It is on the agenda because the mayor sent the letter to you.
Right, and that was part of our—
Something, so it's a part of the agenda. The mayor shall have the power of the veto of resolutions and ordinances passed by the city council, provided that the said veto with the mayor's reasons in writing must be filed with the city clerk at least 24 hours before the date of the next regular meeting of the council, at which said meeting the clerk shall present such veto or vetoes to the council. The council may only at said meeting reconsider the veto at which such proceedings were passed and adopted, and if it so elects, may only at said meeting re-adapt such proceedings by a five-sevenths vote of all the members elected, in which event the veto shall be overridden and it will bar the right of the mayor from any future vetoes of the proposed legislation. Such proceedings shall then become effective on the following day succeeding. Such meeting of the council and ordinances so passed shall become effective immediately thereafter up in publication. No ordinance, resolution, or other proceedings shall be published until the meeting following the meeting at which said ordinance, resolution, or proceeding was adopted. I like to—the members of the city council to pay attention to veto of resolution and ordinance, no amendment to the budget.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any other public comment? Okay, this time, we have fund transfers and current claims, item number six.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Constant.
I move that council approve current claims, items 1 through 35, as outlined in six, item six.
Support.
Okay, supported by Councilwoman Hicks Clayton. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I have a few here. First one is on 618 from Johnson Controls. From what I read here, these were all installation problems, and I'd like to know why we're paying for installation problems. If they installed it, they ought to be fixing it. I'm reading this, and it's all installation problems. And it states it right in there, so why are we paying for shoddy workmanship?
Go ahead, please.
As far as that goes, when we went out for bids for the new rooftop for City Hall, the bid did not include certain items on purpose because Johnson Controls was not the winning bidder, and I made sure it wasn't in there when it was put in there. I had Johnson Controls do the computer hookup to the BAS system because I did not want another contractor touching it. Another contractor could not program the rooftop into their program. I didn't want another contractor to mess that up, so I was purposely left out for Johnson Controls to do that work since they installed the automation system a couple of years ago.
That doesn't answer the question. Question was, why are we paying for repairs because of installation problems? The person who put it in or the company who put it in should be paying for it. It was an installation problem. It clearly states right here on the paperwork.
There was also one item that was accidentally not included in the bid when it went out, so we had to pay for that because we thought it would be included with it, and it wasn't. So that was just one item on there.
I don't know if I'm making myself clear here. The paperwork strictly states it was installation problems. They fixed installation problems. So why are we paying for problems that were caused during installation to that unit? It doesn't matter if it was on the bid or not. The installation caused major problems to the unit, so why are we paying for it?
Which one—
Just read the whole thing.
Which invoice? Which invoice?
It is the—
Go ahead and read the paragraph.
On the third page here, invoice dated 8/3218, invoice number 175534519091.
It'd be just the second invoice, not the first one. The first one, the 2,724 was for installation.
Yeah, so I'm just wondering, why are we paying for—
Second invoice.
Yeah.
So it's not—I'm clarifying, it's not the total $6,000 amount.
Correct, correct. It's just a part of the—
3290.
Yeah. You know, if—
There was—on this invoice included other chain—some issues with another rooftop along with the new rooftop we had installed. There's a couple rooftops on here.
Look, it says, "Integrated new unit into existing JACE supervisory controller. Add at all points and graphics work to repair broken common and power wiring disconnected at time of installation." So why are we paying for that?
Because at that time, in order to get the rooftop working, we had—they accidentally pinched a wire.
So why are we paying for it? I mean, that's like taking your car to the auto repair shop. They take the engine out and break it, put it back in, and say, "Well," I mean, they broke it, not—it wasn't broken because of something that was faulty with the unit on routine things. They pinched the wire. So we're paying—the taxpayers are paying for this where they shouldn't be. I mean, it clearly states right here. This is something that should been caught by your department of why are we paying for this? I mean, it clearly states that right here.
We cannot catch it at the time of installation because they did not hook it up to the computer.
Not saying that. I'm not saying that. You catch it when they give you this report.
And when they fixed it and had the reports, too late to go back to them because it was already repaired.
Where—so you paid for it anyway. Somebody signed this. This was signed by three people right here, and no one caught it? Or did we just sign paper at will?
Madam Chair, if you refer this back to administration or you're willing to pay the first invoice, we'd be happy to look into it.
Yeah, you know, this is not that I don't want to pay these people because work obviously was done and they have to get paid, but I don't want to pay for something that was done—you know, I'm not saying the people were incompetent. Accidents happen. Heck, I can't tell you how many wires I pinched repairing stuff, but you don't charge a customer for it.
Okay, to clarify this, are we talking about accepting invoice 1-713-53245965? Service date, July 31, 2018?
That one's good.
That one's good.
That's the one that you want us to—
No.
For 2,724, right. That's a good one. The other one, you want to refer back to administration, Mayor?
Yeah.
Correct.
That's the one that's $3,290.84, and that is service request invoice 1-75534519091. She'll go back to be referred.
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
And then I have—this, I believe, the chief of police can answer on 620 about the motorcycle training. I believe we sold all our motorcycles to Inkster.
No, we did not.
No.
We saved a few. So we have a few left, two left, and we put a traffic guy into a motorcycle school, so that's—it's it, but we kept two.
That is sufficient. And then I've got one other question about 6-28, about the fuel for—motor fuel for fire. Where is that fuel stored at? Is that at the fire station? Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Okay, Councilman Abdullah.
This is for Director Jack McIntyre. Just wanted to get a clarification on item numbers 62 and 63. The amount—the amount for the invoices for the work completed for the sidewalk program, $4,288. Just wanted to get a clarification. Is that city work? Are we going to be reimbursed for that by the residents? The amount is 4,288.
Yeah.
4,288, I'm sorry.
That's—4,288 is part of the sidewalk program, so the residents will get billed for that, or probably already happened, though.
So then the second question I had is, what is the difference between that one, if you could clarify, and item numbers 63? For the amount of $22,357, are those city work or are those—because it also has a lot of addresses on there for ALAN construction.
Yeah, so that's a contract with DPW. That's for when they do have, like, water main breaks and things in the street.
I see. Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Bazey.
Again, I'm not going to approve these here because I like contracts, majority of the contracts—contractors in these invoices, and also in addition to the sewer cleaning. I mean, you can—anybody from Dearborn Heights can drive down a lot of streets. A lot of our streets are flooded, so I don't know what sewers they're cleaning, but they're not cleaning all the sewers in Dearborn Heights. Got multiple calls today with streets are flooded. I've seen a bunch of them, and also got a couple residents that have flooded basements from this.
Okay.
Madam Chair. Once again, I'd like to express to Councilman Bazey that the storm sewers and sanitary sewers are two separate systems. Nagel is contracted to do the sanitary sewers, which has nothing to do with the storm sewers and nothing to do with the street flooding. So they are strictly, for the most part, sanitary sewers unless we run into a problem with a storm sewer we can't get to, then they do it, but they are strictly clean the sanitary sewers. And that is the difference, the why.
We still—I know I've seen—or it was discussed before, last few months, that somebody was going to put cameras down and see—again, you know, we keep talking about somebody dumping stuff in our sewers, and it was brought up a few meetings back that there was a company that was busted for dumping, but obviously, we have similar—the same sewers are being cleaned, so obviously—or maybe somebody else is dumping in these sewers, and there's no cameras or pictures to state that or to show what's being dumped down these sewers.
The company that was—that got caught dumping was actually dumping into a storm sewer and not sanitary sewer, and that was part of the problem.
Yeah, just an update on that. We did have both the company and the driver in court. We had six charges against the company. I asked the prosecutor to—I said, "Can we do a Kim Worthy on these people?" So we had six charges against—that was kind of meant to be funny. Six charges on—if you've ever seen Kim Worthy prosecute a case, if she can find 72 charges to charge against someone, she'll do it, but—so we found that we could do six charges against the company, five against the driver. They were found guilty or pled responsible on all charges, and all full fines were applied to both the company and to—the driver, and they were put on notice as well.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Wenzel.
Now, was this the—the person guilty or accused of this, was it the business owner or the company hired to dispose of the grease?
So the company had just left a business in our city and had been paid by this merchant in our city to clean out the grease trap. He cleaned out the grease trap. By the way, that company is Little Caesar's on Van Born, and they're super responsible. They clean their trap on a very regular basis, so props to Little Caesar's. He immediately left that location, pulled a little bit further into the parking lot, opened up a storm drain, and started dumping it right into the storm drain. So the company came in, they, you know, at least presented that they've been in business for close to 50 years. They did not—they did not want the reputation of doing this, so they were willing to take any punishment, so to speak, that we brought their way, and as far as I know, I don't think the driver's working for them anymore, so.
Are these companies licensed by anybody?
Yeah, well, they're—they have their own licensing through the state of Michigan to be a business. We don't require that they—there's so many of them, we don't—we wouldn't require that they be licensed in our city. We license businesses in our city that actually have a brick and mortar in our—in our city.
So this could be none of this problem could be the own business owners, it could be the grease disposal companies doing all this theoretically.
No, it's—the grease collection company that's responsible. They're the ones that may be doing it. What they can do by doing this is they can undercut their competition and say to, for instance, Little Caesar's, "Hey, I can do it for $70," because they don't have the overhead costs of then driving somewhere and disposing it. So a lot of the other—and trust me, other folks in the industry are well aware that we prosecuted this case. Word travels very quickly because I've gotten calls from other companies that do this function in our city to clearly say, "Hey, we don't do that. That's not our practice." And we were wondering why where this company was dumping their stuff because they all pretty much go to the same place. It's in Detroit on Wyoming where they actually deposit after they get their truck gets filled up, and some of the folks are saying that they never saw—I'm not at liberty yet to say the company's name. I'm hoping that we can actually maybe even do some press about it, but they're actually asking, "How come we never see this company A? Why are they never coming and dumping their stuff?" Well, clearly, they're—it's because they're going into cities' storm drains and dumping it there.
So this is—this is storm drain, so this doesn't address the sanitary sewer issue that is our main concern here.
So he'd already collected it out of the building and was supposed to transport it somewhere else. Our—the whole reason we adopted the grease ordinance is that we want to make sure that businesses as well, residentials, and I just met with—and I know you guys know him too, Attorney Roberts, that deals with grease and that. I just met with him this week or had some discussions with him this week about doing a program that targets residentials because that's really—as we saw in Macomb County just a couple weeks ago, that's where a big problem is. It's—you know, folks, folks, this is about the size of what leaves your house, right? So if you're ticking—you know, putting paper towels, if you're putting the wipes that people now want to use, even if they say biodegradable or toilet-friendly, they're not. And that's what ended up being that huge mound in Macomb County was a collection of these things. Just two weekends ago, Mike Blackburn and I—he Mike called me, he said, "You got to come see what's going on," and we were right up here at Drexel and Telegraph. The clean-out cap literally came right off the ground, and grease was just oozing out. We thought it might have something to do with the business that's right there not cleaning their grease interceptor. That's not what it was at all. It was paper towels, and it was other items, and not even necessarily coming from that business. Particularly, it could be coming from that particular residential area. So that's really what our focus is going to be on, is getting the education out there to the residents that you're contributing to something that's a hole this big. And you know, what's interesting is we've talked about, you know, we should be more advanced, and I know one of the council members even mentioned—I don't know anything about Mach flying, so I don't—I'm not trying to be disrespectful to anybody. I don't understand that at all, but I do understand that it costs a lot of money to develop Mach speed and planes that go at Mach speed, and that's going to be the same thing in this situation. If we want to go at it seriously and get cameras in there and find out, is it coming from my house or is it coming from Mr. Miyake's house or is it coming from the deputy chief's house, we're going to have a need to get a very sophisticated system, and a lot of companies will tell you that they can accomplish that, but the research that I've done doesn't really show that that's possible. It would cost us a terrific amount of money to send cameras right up into people's outputs to see if it's coming from their home or not, so.
All right, thank you very much for the information. We appreciate it. Any other questions or discussion? This time, I think we need to make some kind of adjustment to having this one—
Yes, we do. So the maker of the motion, Bob.
Yes.
You have to amend—you would amend your motion if you chose to for that item eight—well, was it 618?
I amend my motion to—
618.
Refer the one item—
618.
618 back to the administration, the Johnson Controls.
And I support that. I was the second, so I support the amendment.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes—Councilman Bazey is opposed. Motion's carried. Next, we have consideration of bids for our emergency management director, Laslow, advertised for proposals for cable studio architectural services.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
I move that we concur with Christina Laslow, emergency management director, at which the city's looking for an architect to draft specifications for and also work with a contractor to complete the renovations needed in a WDHT cable studio, and she is asking that the council authorize the city controllers to advertise for proposals for the architectural services as it relates to the cable studio renovations as outlined in item 7A.
Support? No support? Motion fails. Next item on the agenda is Public Service Administrator Zimmer advertised for bids for sewer maintenance.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Move to concur with Public Service Administrator William Zimmer and authorize the controller's office to advertise for bids for a four-year sewer maintenance agreement as outlined in 7B.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Baz—Councilman—
Muscat.
Muscat, I'm sorry. Listening to the rain. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next, under Reports from Mayor, we have the budget amendment for recreation.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
I move that we concur with Mayor Dan Pletko. He's making a statement that department head Ken Gribble is retiring on September 30, 2018, and he'd like to formally ask for the city council to approve a budget amendment to increase the recreation director position to $75,000 to reflect the conversation that the mayor had with our body in August. The amendment would increase GF number as stated on this, $21,000 from fund balance, and then the rest of the numbers as stated in item 8A.
Anybody's support? No support, motion fails. Next, we have budget amendment, Department of Public Works.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
I'd like to concur with Mayor Dan Pletko. He's got a statement here that department head Bill Zimmer is retiring on December 27, 2018, and he'd like to formally ask that city council approve a budget amendment to increase the DPW director position to $100,000 as outlined in item 8B.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Constant. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
I'm sorry. Go ahead, sir.
Ladies first.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
I'm sorry. Point of order, you are the maker of the motion, which means by Departmentary Rules and Procedure, you have the floor first.
Councilman Abdullah.
I had a question for the mayor. Why is there an increase on this one to $100,000?
It's because using the job classification and the pay compensation survey done by Western Wayne County Conference of Cities and Townships, this is a composite average, and it's been lowered. I'm hoping that we will be able to get a director for $100,000. A lot of the directors that are at $125,000 or above, but that's how we came to this amount.
So I'm a little honestly uncomfortable with going to $100,000. I think honestly, it's a lot of money personally for a director. We'd have to—if we're going to go to $100,000, I'd like to see this one go to a study session at the minimal, but if we were going to go with $100,000 today, to me, it would be much better to put in up to $100,000, because to me, if somebody's not as qualified, I don't know if we want to pay them—I mean, if we go in the direction of $100,000, make it up to $100,000 if we go in that direction.
I have no problem.
But I think $100 is too much personally. I think 75 should be plenty for a director personally at starting pay.
Yeah, I don't think we'll get one for 75. I'd support that, up to $100,000. Council Chair.
Councilman—oh, we have Councilwoman Hicks Clayton first.
Yes, thank you. I did—you know, we do have the Western Wayne comparables, and I also did some more review and research on this, so on the national level. The national level for a position, this is the average nationwide, is $74,000. However, one thing that I thought was an interesting element is that we talked—that what they were doing, the averages, because it was between like $58,000 and, you know, $90,000, but what was included was the qualifications, the experiencing—experienced job requirements and years of experience, so it was actually—you know, would accelerate—not accelerate, but you know what I mean.
Staggered.
Staggered. Based on the years of experience, it can always grow with a position. You're there 10 years, you know, 15 years, 20 years, it increases, and I think that's something for all of our department heads that we should talk about, you know, and—I know, I agree with—you know, up to—there's discretion, but that would have to come back before the council to approve that, you know, budget amount for the position. But I think it should be stepped based on the experience, the qualifications, and the years of service, and I think that's true for every position. We need to talk about job responsibilities, job descriptions, and how that looks.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
We're forgetting one important part. We have a item on the agenda tonight about raises.
That's correct.
So I think we should take care of that first before we do anything with these.
Yeah, I don't think we should be giving any raises out right now.
Well, I'm just saying, we have something on, on the agenda about it. Once we take care of that, I was always in favor of looking at each individual person, or that position, excuse me, and look at that at another date. But to, to, just to do this now, and then I'm, I'm also with Councilman Abdullah and Councilwoman Hicks Clayton about, I'd like to see, you know, people with the qualifications, I mean, just to hire somebody without previous experience and all. So I'd like to see that myself.
See, I also have a question. Exactly what is the job requirement for this position that you will be putting out there, that they are required to have?
There should be a long list of requirements for this, for this position.
Councilman. Mayor?
I would look for somebody who is experienced. We would look both internally and also to surrounding communities. I know quite a few because it, with the position I held both as chair and still hold on the DUA, I have personal firsthand knowledge with about ten or twelve DPW directors in the Down River and Western Wayne. And so those would be the kind of people I'd be looking at.
Well, I guess exactly what qualifications are we looking for, such as a degree or how many years' experience they have?
A degree is not necessarily a major component in this particular area. The major component is going to be that they have significantly have experience in a DPW position and hopefully maybe have even run a DPW position. So that would be the kind of caliber of person that I would be looking for. And you must remember that our DPW director would have to be over building and maintenance, also with the water division, and also highway. Some communities, for instance, townships have water and building and maintenance, but they don't really have a road division because the county does the roads. So we're asking someone to have three hats. And I would certainly hope to find somebody with experience in all three particular areas.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Bazey?
Yeah, and I'm not comfortable in voting on anything unless, like I said, if something's presented to us, because I don't want this to be another position like the emergency manager.
I take offense at that. And I told you that I'm looking for.
That's what happened.
All right, all right. Point of order.
A person that is, got experience in DPW.
Okay, any other discuss, Councilman Coniston?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As everybody said, it's just to vote on these positions blind, I concur with Councilman Abdullah and others that we need to have a study session. We need to have it quickly, you know, on all the reasons set up. What's the position? What are the comparables? And, you know, so on and so forth.
I agree. I agree.
Before we vote.
Do we want to move it to a study session?
You have a motion on the floor, Madam Chair.
Okay, well, this time the motion, any other discussion? Go ahead.
I, I'd like to amend my motion to take this to a study session.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Coniston. Is there any discussion on that? Okay, I'll make it the next meeting then. All right. All those in favor of moving this to a study session, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Councilman Muscat is opposed and Councilman Bazey is opposed. The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is Commission on Aging Reappointments.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Uh, let's see. These aren't concurrences. This is a, this is a received note and file. Is that correct? Can I get an opinion on that, please? These mayor appointments?
I think we have, I, we have to concur.
These are concurrences?
They're not stamped, concur.
Charter? Can I get an opinion before I make the motion?
It says, my secretary Stephanie keeps a close watch on which ones. So to give you a clue, in the, she always put concurrence or received note and file. She has put concurrence.
All right, thank you. So I move to concur with Mayor Daniel S. Pletko on the reappointments to the Commissioner on Aging, Barth Bucciarelli. His term is to expire April twenty twenty-one. Bernice Bulley, and that is to expire twenty twenty-one. And Jim Nagy, term to expire April twenty twenty-one. Linda Mahaney, April twenty twenty, as outlined in eight C.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Bazey. Is there any discussion?
Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
There is. I, I spoke to the chair for this commission today. There is one other commissioner that they had said they submitted and was interested. However, I don't see the reappointment name included here and wonder if there was an update.
It'll be on the next agenda.
Yeah, I addressed that with the mayor before the meeting.
There was a question, and that question's been answered.
All right, very good. Thank you.
Yeah, I addressed, we addressed that before the meeting. Okay, is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is Star Academy Homecoming Parade.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move council approve your request for Star Academy to hold their homecoming parade on Friday, October fifth, two thousand and eighteen at eleven PM. Police Chief Gavin and Fire Chief Brogan have both approved the routes as outlined in eight D.
Support.
Support by Councilman, I don't know who got it.
Give it to Dave Abdullah.
Councilman Abdullah supported it. Everybody came in at the same time. All right, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Dearborn Heights Redskins Junior Football League Annual Homecoming Parade.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Move to approve and grant permission for the Dearborn Heights Redskins Junior Football League Annual Homecoming Parade on Saturday, October sixth, twenty eighteen, eight thirty AM. Police Chief Gavin and Fire Chief Brogan have both approved the route and will provide any services they may require as outlined in eight A.
Support by Councilman Bazey. Is there any discussion? All the, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we need to entertain a veto of city council motion one eight dash three two one.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Bazey.
The, the mayor present, has presented the city council with a veto for this council motion eighteen dash three twenty-one. My intention is to reintroduce the motion and vote on it again according to our city charter. I would like to move nine F forward. And Mr. Clerk, can you please read section seven point one three of our charter titled veto, veto by the mayor?
Point of order, Madam Chairman. At the beginning of the meeting, the agenda was approved as submitted. You cannot go and start changing the agenda.
It's not changed. We're going according to it, and that's the procedure according to charter.
Next item is nine F. It is not, or eight F, not nine.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
So with, and I would like the charter read because what we've heard, if this is the, what we're, we know it to be, this item would not even qualify for a veto. It's not a resolution. It's not an ordinance. It's a budget amendment. So I would like clarification on that point, please.
Mr. Clerk, can you please read that section of the charter for us?
Section seven point one three veto by mayor. The mayor shall have the power of veto of resolutions and ordinances passed by the council, provided that the said veto, with the mayor's reasons in writing, must be filed with the city clerk at least twenty-four hours before the date of the next regular meeting of the council at which said meeting. The clerk shall present such veto or vetoes to the council. The council may only at said meeting reconsider the vote as such proceedings were passed and adopted. And if it so elects, may only at said meetings, re-adopt such proceedings by a five to seventh vote of all members elected, in which event the veto shall be overridden and it will bar the right of the mayor from any future vetoes of the proposed legislation. Such proceedings shall then become effective on the following day succeeding such meeting of the council, and ordinances so passed shall become effective immediately thereafter upon publication. No ordinance, resolution, or other proceedings shall be published until the meeting following the meeting, at which said ordinance, resolution, or proceeding was adopted.
Okay, at this time, we.
Madam Clerk, I just want to get a clarification. So, I'm sorry.
Madam Chair.
Sorry about that.
It's okay.
Uh, Mr. Clerk. So just to get a clarification, it sounds to me like an amendment would not be able to be vetoed. Is that, is that what you're saying? I just want to make sure I'm clear on that.
That, that is not something I can rule on. I.
No, an amendment.
That is a legal, that's a legal question as what the charter.
So maybe the council, but, but I just want, but I just want to finish, because the first sentence is the main issue. The first sentence said, a motion or a resolution. Is that correct? Was there any?
The first sentence says, the mayor shall have power of veto of resolutions and ordinances passed by the council.
Okay, so is there anything about an amendment?
No, sir.
I'm just clarifying.
No, councilman.
Okay, so if that being the case for the council, can you get that clarified if you don't mind?
The only way in which the council can act is either by ordinance or by resolution. There's actually a section of the charter that says it. I don't know it right off the top of my head, but if you want me to go get a copy, I'll read it right to you. So essentially, anything that this body does is either an ordinance or it is a resolution. Whether it's called a motion, a budget amendment, or anything else, it is a resolution. Right?
Okay, at this time, let's just entertain the veto. Per charter, we have to reintroduce your motion. Let's reintroduce it and vote on it. Um, go ahead.
I have the section here, if anybody wants to look at it. But the veto, is it just a received note and file?
No.
No, we have to act upon it according to parliamentary, who I did.
Re-adopt such proceedings by five.
Talked to. We have to reintroduce this.
Amendment.
According to charter. That's the way our charter reads. It's, it's pretty obvious. So at this time, um, we can res.
Madam Chair, I, I too called the parliamentary, because I was not aware of how this happens. I know the mayor has the right to veto and city council has the right to vote whichever way their heart tells them to vote. So I called the parliamentary and she explained to me that once this is brought up, that we reintroduce whatever the mayor wants to veto and we vote on that again. If there's, the super majority votes.
Right.
For it again, then the veto fails. That's my understanding from the parliamentarians I spoke to from MML.
And according to our charter, if we have five, a minimum of five out of seven votes, that's called a super veto and it will override this veto presented to us tonight.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
Somebody here's got to have like a hundred percent what we can't, can't do.
I have a hundred percent because I'm willing, I'll stand behind what I'm saying because I did my homework.
I, I did too.
I will definitely stand behind it.
I spoke to multiple parliamentarians from.
I did too.
MML. They were, fewer attorneys.
Yeah. And I'm not, yeah, I, I know exactly. I made sure because this is very serious.
But we have our, but we have our city attorney telling us something opposite. That's why I'm saying.
I'm sorry, but I've already got my advice and I'll stand behind the advice I got any day of the week.
I think, you know what, Councilman Abdullah's just wanted a clarification from our city attorney. And I'm going to believe that the, 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 the corporation council is correct, but we still have that up. We still have to do what we have to do in that terms.
No, my point is, I mean, I listened to what the clerk said. It was very clear to me, at least from my perspective. You know, the main thing was whether this is, this can be done specifically as a, as an amendment, amendment to the, what do you call it? And according to the council, he's saying we can. The clerk's saying he's not sure. I just want to make sure that we do the right thing as far as parliamentary procedures.
It is. It does fall under the veto.
Yeah, I, well, what I heard the city attorney say was that everything the council does is, as the charter section says, and the charter was drafted a while ago, resolutions and ordinances. But my question is, don't we have to receive note and file the veto first?
Right. And then we do nothing with that. Then we have to go back and reintroduce this city budget amendment and vote on it.
No, note and files, we have to vote on this.
No, Madam Chair, received note and files in action with the parliament, and I also spoke to a parliamentary today. We, and it is in our charter that we have to re-entertain the motion, the original motion, and vote. It takes five, seven votes. And what the attorney said, and he is correct as well, about what the council as a body can do is even the budget amendment is actually a resolution.
It is.
It's by resolution. So therefore, a resolution or an ordinance can be vetoed by the mayor per charter.
All right. At this time, let's just go ahead with the city budget amendment, reintroducing it, and we'll take a vote on it.
But when we get to nine F.
When we get to nine F.
Well, I, I would think that we would, we would receive it and maybe, and then when we get to nine F, we vote on, that's why the, I, as I understand it, Councilman Bazey reintroduced the, the amendment.
Well, I was told since this pertains to eighteen dash three twenty-one, we can move the city budget amendment eighteen dash three twenty-one up and pair it with the eight F, nine F and eight F, and pair it up because they do, they are both together. And then we take a vote on it.
May I make a suggestion? If you are looking at whether or not you are going to end up overriding the mayor's veto, someone could make a motion to override the mayor's veto as contained at item eight F.
Oh.
And to re-adopt such proceedings, namely the motion which is vetoed, as also outlined at item nine F.
I was told there's no motion to be made at all according to the veto that we just reintroduced the city budget amendment. And at this, this point, that's the way we're going to do it.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Coniston?
Well, what, for example, if we want to have the study session that we've talked about on these cuts before we vote on it, then we won't have the opportunity to do that unless somebody makes a motion to move nine F to a study session.
No, at this point, we have to reintroduce it according to our charter.
Yep.
Or we'll be in violation of that. And I'm not going to do that. We're going to reintroduce it, vote on it as it's submitted.
So eight F and nine F will be?
They have to be paired together because they are the same exact eighteen dash three two one, the same motion, as referenced in both of them.
Madam Chair. I'd like to point something out. Originally, at the August fourteenth, two thousand and eighteen meeting, the first time this item was submitted, it went and failed on a six one vote. And then at eighteen, two eighty-four, a motion was made by Councilwoman Hicks Clayton, seconded by Councilman Muscat, moved to a study session, the proposed city budgets amendment as outlined in item nine B, per Councilman Bazey's communication dated August eighth, two thousand and eighteen. That was six weeks ago. We really wanted to have a discussion with this body relative to it. In the case of Mr. Joe Hescham, that is CDBG grant monies, so that is all federal dollars. There is nothing to be saved by cutting that particular salary. In addition, in the police department, the position that you're slashing is taking, there's so much volume going on.
Okay.
That, that we are losing a police officer. We wanted to make, and we think we have a very strong case for that and these budget increases.
Okay.
And we're not being permitted to address it.
We're getting off track here.
You were asked by your councilmen to have.
We're getting off, we're getting off track right now. We.
You never had it.
Excuse me. We are getting off track. We need to stay focused on what we have to do here.
Your, a motion was passed for you to set up a committee to hold to discuss this, and you never did. Let's be transparent.
Okay. At this point, did you want to reintroduce?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Madam Chair, I'd like to reintroduce nine F. I move the council to adopt the following budget amendments, to reduce, reduce the salaries for the grant coordinator salary from eighty thousand to fifty-nine thousand four hundred, the comptroller from seventy-five thousand to sixty-seven thousand five hundred, the HR director from seventy-five thousand to sixty-seven thousand five hundred, the emergency manager coordinator salary from seventy-five thousand to fifty-four thousand, ordinance director from seventy-five thousand to fifty-four thousand, and remove the investigative service secretary position as outlined in nine F.
Okay.
Council Chair, real quick.
Councilman Muscat?
Just notified that the Wayne County has issued a tornado warning right now, just for everybody to be well aware.
Oh, great.
Just came over, um, flashed in front of my eyes. I move council approve the budget amendment as outlined in nine F.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilman Muscat.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
If I may ask Councilman Bazey, if you would please share the reasoning behind this, please, with, for public information.
Well, it has to be second and first.
Oh, I'm sorry. You already did, or didn't?
No, I just made a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's what we're waiting for.
We can open it up for discussion.
All right. So I will second that so we can have that discussion, please.
Okay, second and. Okay, seconded, supported by Councilwoman Hicks Clayton. Is there any discussion?
Yes, my standing has to go ahead. My standing has to leave.
Okay, I can clarify again. When we went back and discussed the budget or the pay raises, it was not disclosed to us, the two things that we talked about before, the letter from the state and also the unfunded liabilities, that it was not, I don't want to use the wrong terminology, but it was not shared with us till after this thing was passed. And also that when we voted on this, the millages, Councilman Ray Muscat remembers, there was two letters. One, it was all the millages, and there was also the budget amendment. So we were told that we have to vote on the millages, but somehow there was an item in there as a budget amendment. So this is something that was never, it was, we approved it and we went back and forth. Everybody can go back to the tape when we approved the budget. They can look and see that we actually did, we never wanted to give the pay raises at that time, but we approved the millages, but we were told, yep.
And it was kind of slid past us without us even realizing it.
And also, the other thing is, uh, the positions, somebody sees fit, if somebody was not qualified to do a position, one of my biggest issue and a lot of residents is the emergency managers position. It was moved from a well-qualified person to a person that, you know, was not as qualified as the person we had for the emergency managers position. That was a huge issue. So you're just moving, as the mayor mentioned, in Dearborn press and guide, he wants to refresh, but refreshing means the person has to have certification for that position. And I'm getting dozens of phone calls from residents that are concerned about if we have a disaster or an issue in a city of Dearborn Heights, and that's one of the reasons I put this motion in place.
Madam Chair, if I may just-
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
And thank you, by the way, I already, I knew the answer, so I thought it was important for the public to be aware. Um, and I'm going to go back to what we talked about earlier with the positions of DPW and others. You know, you can see these are very blanket across the board, 75,000 for everybody, regardless of your position, the qualification, the years' experience, job description, that's not being considered, and I think that's really important, we move to that. The escalating steps based on those things, qualifications, what's, what you need for the position, your years of experience that you bring into it. I think that's so important, and we're not seeing that here. So I think that's, you know, something for us, definitely, I'd like to see us move that direction.
And, Madam Chair, I'm sorry, I forgot to also mention that there's an issue with, uh, I mean, all these salaries are, I mean, everybody keeps mentioning that it can compatible or being competitive with surrounding cities. However, you know, we operate on four days a week, and that's, that's, that's it. I mean, you guys, anybody that walked in here, walks in the city hall, it says close on Fridays.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Coniston.
Well, and respectfully, right, but these, these aren't across, as far as the city budget, these are not across the board cuts to every, you know, there's certain people in certain departments. That's why I thought, uh, we could have next week a study session to, to know for the-
Yeah, well, okay, we've got a motion out there. We have to entertain the motion. We can't get off-
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
Mayor.
I was going to defer to the councilman.
Councilman Abdullah.
Something that concerns me about this is, again, and I've stated this before and I'll just state it again, I have no problem if we wouldn't have given these raises way back when. But the fact that we did, and then we go back and go through city hall right now and cut one, two, three, four, five, six different department heads or positions by a significant amount is not going to be good. You already have currently, so far, we have one that decided to retire, another one that decided to retire, um, one that's on the way, the comptroller, without getting into details, had some situations based on this. This is just not good for city hall to go through, wipe out people's, you know, a significant amount of their salaries. If you don't mind, Council Chair, whenever somebody doesn't agree with you, you want to shut them up. I mean, please allow us to finish.
No.
So to just go through city hall right now and start cutting people off, cutting their salaries off is just not good for business. You've already lost potentially three department heads with a possible fourth, just not a good idea. And if it's in terms of savings, I mean, we have the budget right here, is 8,000 line items in the budget. We didn't want to touch not one of those 8,000, but yet we want to go through every single department and just cut their salaries 20, 30%. I just, not good business, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, no, actually, this is just the beginning because in talking to the parliamentary today, they said that we have a fiduciary right to the residents to prevent us from going to emergency management, and if anybody thinks that's a good thing to do, talk to any city that has went through emergency management. They will tell you first thing they come in there, they take everybody's health care, everybody's. So this is just a small cut, but it's the beginning that we've got to do what we can to prevent this, so we don't have an emergency manager step in. Um, like you said, we did give these raises, but when we took them back, we, nobody's making any less than they were already making. Two of the people retiring were already receiving their retirement besides the money. Um, and that was the agreed-upon amount that they had agreed on when they retired and then came back to work.
Madam Chair.
I'm sorry, Quinn.
Mayor.
If I may, I'd like to read my veto, but I will tell you, we are nowhere near-
No, at this time, we don't need to read the veto. That, that is not-
Let me respond. You've, you've all gotten an opportunity to talk. We are nowhere near any emergency manager. You don't even know the requirements for emergency manager. We don't even meet, I, probably even one of them. But the fact is that we have a fund balance, we're going to have a positive revenue over expenditures in this year. Plant Moran had indicated that we were in fine shape. We had the meeting. I don't know why all of you are, not all of you, but some of you are ignoring that and the damage that you're doing. You are not a fiduciary responsible party. In fact, I'm, I'm coming to the conclusion, and I think it's becoming very obvious to many people, that there's a very opaque thinking process going on at this table that is centered on trying to create a failure in the city, and it's really, it's deplorable.
Actually, you have a city council that does their homework. I'm very confident in what I'm presenting. Mr. Muscat did the same homework, so did Councilwoman Hicks, and so did Councilman Bazey. We're all on the same page. We're very strong about the way we feel in regards to this. Okay, at this point, I'm going to put it to a vote.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Wenzel.
Um, a couple of things is, I'm going to speak on behalf of the department heads. Regardless if they are on a four-day work week or a three-day work week, or they work one day a week, they've got a job to perform and they're, they're doing their job. So the, that, the four-day work week, that would go basically toward like, you know, other people. These, they, they do their jobs in four days. So that's not an issue, the four-day work week. And the mayor brought up the grant coordinator salary. It's a federal, it's federal money. That would, I mean, that's, that's something I'm going to think about. And I was assured by the council chair that we would go into a study session after today and reevaluate all of these after we vote on this. We will go through all these again, and, and other ones also, other that aren't even on this list that either not reduced, but maybe look at giving some else, somebody else, somebody. But it's going to be, I was assured that we would look into each one of these individually after today.
Yes.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Coniston.
Just to remind everyone again, you have the study session, this is a big step, it deserves some study and-
Okay, but we have a motion on the table, like we've stated several times, we need to vote on this motion first before we can move anywhere else, and we're wasting a lot of time just arguing over something we can't go to.
I do have one more follow-up question, if I may, please.
Okay.
Because I think it's important.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
And we know the city's on a four-day work week and has been since 2011, I believe. And, um, I have a question about TPOM. And in that contract, once it's, you know, finally ratified and approved and brought before the body again, there is, in order to return to the five-day work week, there's a 30% increase built into that, for that to happen. Traditionally, the benefits of that contract has been extended to department heads. Is that true for this as well? That 30% bump?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, at this time, we have a motion on the table, um, that is reducing the salaries that we voted on a couple of weeks ago. A vote for yes would mean that we would agree to remove the salaries like we did a couple of weeks ago. We do need at least five people out of seven for that to carry. If not, then it would be vetoed. If we have at least five out of seven according to charter, it would be a super veto and it would override the veto by the mayor. At this time, I'm going to ask for a vote on Councilman Bazey's city budget amendment. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Show of hands. Councilman Muscat, Councilman Bazey, Councilwoman Hicks Clayton, Councilman Wenzel, and me, Malinowski Maxwell. We have a super veto.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I want to make sure that this goes to a study session immediately.
Next Tuesday.
Immediately.
Next Tuesday.
We need to discuss this.
Okay, Councilman, we're going to do it next Tuesday.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have reports from city officials. Treasurer Riley, demo fire truck and rescue squad financing.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
I move that we concur with City Treasurer John Riley II. The city council previous meeting has, had approved the purchase of a 75-foot aerial 4854 demo fire truck for 726,570, um, in a motion with a copy attached. And the second item was a new rescue squad for 193,826 in motion 18 dash 315, copy attached. And since only $300,000 is available from capital outlay, it is recommended by the Fire Chief Brogan for the city to finance the remaining 620,396 over a period of five years as outlined in item nine A.
Support.
Okay, and we need to go back because we did have-
You can finish.
Cool.
You can finish that and then I have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
Can I get the city clerk to, for the people in the audience and on TV to explain what Act 99 is? Since we, we, I know what it is, but we throw it around and a lot of people say, what's Act 99?
It's just a financing of the fire trucks like an installment purchase contract. And the, the law of the state of Michigan limits the, our ability to borrow funds, and Act 99 is ability for short-term borrowings for this type of equipment. And what the benefit of is, is that the interest on it is tax-exempt on the holder if we issue less than $10 million of debt in a particular year, which we will this year. So this will be, have a, we should anticipate getting a lower interest rate than you would if you were to go to a bank and get ratings. The unfortunate part is we won't see as low as the interest rates because the Trump tax cuts has lowered corporate taxation, and so, you know, the benefit for them getting the income on this will be lower than it had been in the past. And so we used to see extremely low rates. They'll probably be lower than a normal, you know, loan, but not as low as we've seen in the past. Hopefully, that explains it.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
I second.
Okay, at this time, I need to go back and I need to carry the motion for nine, for the city budget amendment.
Yeah, I have a question, Madam Chair, just for clarification for recording purposes, that nine F and, eight F and nine F were coupled together.
Correct.
So there is no need to take any action on eight F. It was taken together.
Right, right, yes.
Thank you, just wanted to clarify that.
Yes, sorry about that. Okay, next, under report from city officials, we have ordinance enforcement and animal control director McIntyre, Michigan Humane Society renewal agreement.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
I move the, we approve the renewal agreement between the city of Dearborn Heights and Michigan Humane Society for housing and care of Dearborn Heights domestic animals, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the contract as outlined in nine B.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Abdullah. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
I had a question, I'm not sure if it would be Jack McIntyre, our director, or the mayor that would answer this, but did we ever, when I went through this contract, we got roughly 4,500, as I recall, that we pay him per month, I think it was 4,500 if I'm not mistaken, and obviously other fees that we pay, yeah, 4,581 per month. And I'm just curious, similar to what Dearborn and some other cities have done, at the time, what the thought process in terms of maybe possibly doing our own building, maybe not at the level of Dearborn has just done, which is a much larger building, but obviously it's a bigger city, maybe through grants or whatever, even on a smaller scale, possibly here at city hall, somewhere, just as an option. Did we ever look into that and what was the reasoning at the time?
Yep.
It's not affordable, but I'll, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, it's so expensive and, you know, a lot of the way that they're able to operate as well as the other shelters is through gifts and grants that they get, and they're already established, at least Michigan Humane Society nationally. Now, interestingly, there, there has been some conversation about maybe doing a, an area shelter that would tie in several cities, that maybe would involve a millage where there's like a flat, you know, a flat rate that all cities would contribute and having a central location for something like that. There was some talk about that a couple of years ago, but it didn't really go anywhere, so.
But even if we converted maybe possibly one of the city, smaller city buildings or maybe on, you know, whatever, but convert one of those into this type of a setup, is that at all possible, or just not, or is it still cost prohibitive?
It's cost prohibitive. We, we were invited by Dearborn to share, but they wanted us to buy a space, and they would reserve that space.
Lease, kind of?
Uh, no, it would be more like a partnership. So let's say we bought 12 spots for dogs and 10 for cats, and so those would be our spots. We couldn't get the numbers to work. The number was pretty prohibitive.
Above what we're paying?
Yes.
One of the, one of the things that I'll mention is that unique within our city that, you know, we have the low-cost clinic that they partner with. They have, um, emergency staff available 24/7, even a facility like Dearborn doesn't. One of the things that are, that I appreciate about sheltering with them is that no animal can leave that shelter unless they can prove that they're vaccinated. Uh, they're not allowed to leave unless they are vaccinated, so I appreciate that. And the, um, just the availability that, that we have to them. Recently, in the last two years with this contract, it is a flat rate, and one of the things they did, extended to us that they haven't done to all cities is, we used to be tied to a number, and once we exceeded a number, then our rate went up quite considerably per day charged. So what we were able to kind of negotiate with them is to just offer us a flat rate and then make it unlimited in terms of how many animals. Because the first year we opened up, we, we brought in almost 400 more animals than we ever guessed that we were going to, and it just kept increasing, increasing. We were having some issues with people maybe even dumping animals in our city, and then we were bringing them in as Dearborn Heights, you know, animals. So I, I'm really happy with the fact that they offered an extension to us, that they would give us a flat rate fee, and then the, there would, it would be, you know, unlimited as far as animals go.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Just real quick, I'm glad you mentioned the vaccine, the low-cost vaccination clinics. My question about that is, and I don't know if I dismissed it, I've read it a couple of times, that's not included in this contract, correct?
No, no.
Is something you work out along the way, correct?
Yeah.
But we could expect that to continue?
Yeah, we've already booked, you know, I, we did 671 vaccines at the last clinic right here in front of city hall. And as we were talking, each year, the first year it was just going to be, we were the only location outside of the city of Detroit that had a location for low-cost vaccinations. MHS traditionally did all their low-cost clinics in various parks around Detroit. So I kind of begged and begged and I worked, there, there was a, David, who was the, the CEO of MHS Michigan at the time, uh, I said, I think this will be a good thing for us and will be an even better thing for you. So each year it's gotten bigger, and I, the person that runs the low-cost clinics at[1726.26] And the person that runs the low-cost clinics, at this last one, just to kind of lock him in that we'd have it again, we talked about how we're going to, you know, have the line a little different. It got very hot out there this year. And so, we decided we're going to run the line along the building where it's covered. So I kind of, I think we kind of sealed the deal with that. And I actually called him today and said, "I'm going to be printing it in our newsletter. I just want to confirm that, you know, we're good to go this year." So it'll be either late June or early July.
Very good, thank you. I had one more, if I may.
Go ahead, please.
Regarding the wildlife, because I know I've heard from people and I know I personally had the same experience with a raccoon who bit my dog. And she ended up killing the raccoon. She shook it once and it was done. But the proper disposal of that, is that included in, I'm reading that it is included? Do we make those referrals? They call the police non-emergency line in the off-hours? How is that handled? Because those have to be properly disposed, you just don't throw them in the garbage. Right? Is that included? I want to make sure residents are aware.
No, I'm not...
What to do to properly dispose of these things.
I'm not, there are some animals that you can dispose in your own trash. If you, if it's a dead squirrel on your property, you can double-bag it with a black bag and you can put it in your trash. And the DNR, you know, says it's acceptable. If we suspect the animal might, if you see a raccoon during the day, that's not real common. So it's likely that the raccoon might be sick. So we want to know about that. And if the animal ends up dying on your property, we want to know about that, too. So, but our department is the department that if they're, I wasn't sure how this happened, but I got a call one day from Bill Zimmer, he says, "You can have it." So, because we're getting all these calls about dead squirrels, I'm like, "Oh, great." We actually had quite a few people that enjoy picking them up. They do like a little ceremonial thing when they deposit them. But what you saw included in there is disposition for cats and dogs that's included in that at the shelter. So that's what that's in that contract.
Right, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion's carried. Next, we have Park and Recreation Director Gribble, Park and Recreation Commission reappointments.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Conston.
I move that we concur with Recreation Director Gribble, excuse me, and reappoint Gary Barkoff and Justin Toth to the Parks and Recreation Commission.
Second?
Seconded by Councilwoman Hicks Clayton. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion's carried.
Mr. Barkoff is here tonight.
Next, we have Police Chief Gavin Tactical Helmet and Liberator II Headset Request to Purchase and Pay.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move council approve for the purchase and payment for Tactical Helmet Liberator II Headset. This will be used by our TRU officers as outlined in 9D.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Bazey. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
Just a quick question for anybody. What is a TRU officer? Is that truancy or...
Tactical Response Unit, which is slide opposite.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Deputy Police Chief Volta Torani, Daniels Defense DDM4.V4SAR-15's Request to Purchase and Pay.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
I move that we concur with Deputy Chief Daniel Volta Torani. Close enough. Daniel V.
I had it right until I had to say it, and then I messed it up.
So I apologize. To concur, requesting council approval for the purchase and payment for the following: 60 Daniels Defense DDM4.V4SAR-15's, $1,924 per package for a total of $115,640. And the weapon package will be issued to the individuals who choose to participate in the personal patrol rifle program as outlined in Item 9E.
Second?
Supported by Councilwoman Hicks Clayton. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
If I could get a clarification from the deputy chief, the sentence in here, and I couldn't understand it, but participants in the program will have payroll deductions over a specific period of time. I'm just curious, why, and at the end of it says, "The officers will have ownership of the weapons package transferred to them after repayment and 10 years of service or retirement." And so, I'm just curious, I know they're paying for it, but why, for this particular thing that they pay for and they get to keep it? It just sounds a little odd.
When Officer joins the department, he's issued a sidearm. After a certain period of time, either the weapon becomes old or we go to a different weapon system, or they retire, we offer them the ability to purchase their firearm that they carried through their career.
Oh, so this is common in the police department?
So we're getting ahead of the game here, getting our money back into the system and the officers take care of that weapon a little bit more than they normally would.
Aye.
And the program was implemented by our K-9 officer here and his, where's your partner at? He's a, so they developed the program themselves, they implemented, came up with the financing ideas, so you guys have some winners coming up here.
Okay, thank you. Madam Chair.
Councilman Wensel.
I've got a question, too, for, now that AR-15, that's Automatic Rifle, is that what that stands for?
Nope.
What's it stand for?
Assault Rifle.
Program manager?
Assault Rifle, isn't it?
It's not Automatic Rifle, it's a semi-automatic.
Semi.
It's a semi-automatic rifle.
Is it for a particular, particular part of the police force? Special branch or something?
It's for the road patrol officers.
Oh, road patrol officers?
Mm-hmm.
They're coming to get you.
How many are you buying?
Sixty.
Sixty?
But the money's coming from forfeiture.
Yeah, I'm just curious what they were, just all those numbers always.
Yeah, a lot of numbers, a lot of letters.
So they'll be carrying these in their car? You know what I'm saying?
Maybe.
Maybe. It's seriously to do with...
It might not be for public knowledge.
Classified.
But they'll be used in police functions.
Yeah, okay, all right, thank you.
Chief, one point of reference in the AR question, AR stands for Armalite, which is the original manufacturer of that style of weapon.
Oh, okay.
It has nothing to do with Assault Rifle or anything in that area. It's Armalite.
Okay, all right, thank you, thanks, Bob.
Thank you, Mr. Grant, thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next on the agenda is new business. We have a business license renewal for Anthony's All Car and Truck Services LLC located at 20032 Van Born.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Move to approve the business license renewal application for Anthony's All Car and Truck Sales as outlined in 13A.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Abdullah. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion's carried. Next, we have members of the public. This portion is for comments from city council members at the table.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to just extend some thank yous real quick, if I may. Recently, the beginning of the new school year, I was contacted by a group who offered 100 backpacks to us and to said, "Pick out a school," you know. And I knew from volunteering in the schools where the needs were, but I didn't realize how great they were when we discovered a school district with eight, or actually, a school with over 80% of the students below poverty level, which put us at about 500 backpacks of a need. It took us about eight hours to get 500 backpacks, which was amazing. And I want to thank those community partners for their support with, and taking my phone call and answering the call to that, including LAHC, Midwest Recycling, Congresswoman-elect Rashida Talib, Books for Benefit, who also provided books to every student in that school, and DTE. Without you, that would not have been possible. And the students were so appreciative, as well as the families. It was a wonderful thing to share with the community and thank everyone for that support. And on a, the second thing I have is, I've received a lot of calls from residents regarding lights out along Ford Road between Telegraph and, let's see, that would be Inkster. And I did speak with our DTE liaison, who they went out and they replaced over 30 burnt-out lights along Ford Road. So that should be properly lit now, and that's great, and we appreciate that. And then I had calls about Warren Avenue. I drove it today, only saw two out, but the ones that you're seeing are out are by the sewer project. And those lights aren't going to be on, I imagine, because of the work they're doing there. But as soon as that work is finished, I'm sure they'll be back on. So that's just my update for the residents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Bazey.
I'd like to make a comment. One of the, I was not happy a couple of weeks ago when the mayor made a threat towards two council members that they better vote on a motion, not vote on a motion. And that's not, I mean, I strongly oppose that. I'm not, I don't appreciate anybody making threats towards any of the council members. That's one. The second...
Can I just ask you, I don't know really what you're talking about, but if anybody thought I don't threaten people, I apologized to anybody. But I certainly, if it was you, Mr. Bazey, I don't recall.
No, not me, it was two other...
Actually, it was me. I was one of them and so was...
Councilman...
Wensel. Councilman Wensel, we were getting our mail at the mailbox and you came up to us and you told us, "We better not pass Bazey's resolution if we know it's..."
Or you'll be removed from now.
I would never...
You were going to call, yeah, you were going to have us all removed.
Yes, I heard that.
That, I do recall.
I heard that, too, Mayor.
I forgot about that, you're right.
We have, one of my directors had to call the police because you threatened them, so I guess we're all threatening everybody.
Okay, well, let me, okay, since you brought it up, Mayor, okay, the other issue we have, it's happened to two other council members, your director is driving by people's houses, parking in front of people's houses. That's a threat, that's also harassment, and that's stalking. The other, the other things, we ought to go move forward. I got a call from one of the residents, I was investigating this, and I found it to be very legit. One of your department heads went, wrote up a bunch of issues on one of the houses that that person was, has, she was a senior citizen, that's pretty disgusting, actually, me talking about it, I'm disgusted, I'm sick to my stomach. She had a terminal illness, a senior citizen, she wanted to sell her house. And this department head came in and he wrote up, I can't remember how many, but it was a 15, maybe $20,000 with the violations on the house. And he went and he told the lady that one of his family members will purchase the house, well, came back and wrote some more stuff, ended up purchasing the house, never did anything to the house, and the house ended up on a for rent sign two, three days after closing, and nothing was done to it. That's pretty disgusting. And there was another case, I know, but I'm not going to mention it till I verify it. But this one, for sure, there was a house, and we brought it to your attention, Mayor, in your office. And the only thing you were concerned about is the pay raises and the budget. And we brought it up and nothing was done. And the other issue, I keep getting complaints from residents and also from real estate agents that certain people can come to the counter, not even come to the counter, they go behind closed doors, they get permits, and there's other agents that are waiting in line to get permits, and they're waiting for a long time. And certain agents, they walk in, five minutes later, they walk out with their permit. I don't know how that, I mean, I'd like for somebody to explain that to me.
The one that you and two other council members came to see me on, I have asked repeatedly for the name of the person so I can investigate it, and nobody's given me that name of that person. Please give me the name and I, most certainly, I've already talked to the police department about it, I'm just waiting for the name and the address.
Council Chair, I, are you referring to something? I don't know how someone could end up writing up someone for 15,000 to 20,000 dollars of violations.
They were selling their house. This is other, they were going for...
$200, $200 per ticket, and I have not seen anyone written up for citations.
No, 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 no.
I think they're buying city inspection repairs.
City inspection repair report.
You gotta do this and you gotta do that, it was over...
That's not, that's not city fines and costs, that's person having to come up to...
Yeah, but if a director, one of the mayor's directors has the power, abusing power by writing or telling that person, a resident, that their house needs that much repair, and that person has a terminal illness, a senior citizen, and she was, she had to sell her house, she needed to sell her house, and that person took advantage of that situation.
But the person, people have to end up coming up to code with regard to that, and if they have a problem...
Yeah, but the house was never brought to code, it was for rent like two days after the closing. How can that be?
They would still have to end up being brought up to code in order for it to end up being rented. And if it, if it's not up to code or if the person has a problem, then we normally, when we're prosecuting, refer them out of the CBD BG in order to end up getting some sort of a loan or grant.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I believe this is a personnel issue which should be discussed in closed session.
Yeah, I agree.
This is something that we shouldn't be discussing out in public.
Well, I don't, my only point for raising it is, is that if it was something that had to do with the citation, I had never seen it. If it is something that has to deal with something being brought up to code, it's not necessarily all that unusual for something to end up having 15,000 to 20,000 dollars in repairs, you know?
I guess the whole purpose is, is it's possibly a conflict of interest, the person that wrote up the violations actually ended up purchasing the property, implying to the homeowner that it needed repairs. And when you look at the list, some of them were not code violations.
All right, well, that would be...
Like the front screen door is not a code violation.
If we were made aware of it, because it also violates state law if someone was doing it.
Do you address?
And we need an address and we, we need to be made aware of that. It's kind of impossible for anyone to prosecute anyone if you don't end up providing information.
I will get that.
Please.
If, see, I think they're afraid of coming forward that it won't be addressed correctly.
Oh, I'll address it. You give me the address, I will address it.
Yeah, but this is a building department, this is not code.
I am a, if someone is in a house and they haven't had it inspected, then that call, that's my responsibility.
True. Okay.
But you can't throw things out there and then not give us all the information. I mean, a couple of meetings ago, there was a suggestion that there was 20 people that were calling, and I'll do the FOIA if I have to. I can't do an audit of something if I don't know what to compare it to. And there are, there are different fees for different work that's done in the building department. I don't know about this particular situation, but I guarantee you, you give me the address and I'll get, I'll figure it out. And I'll make sure that if someone did something incorrectly, or somebody moved someone into a house that's not supposed to be, we'll vacate the people and we'll make sure that the owner's responsible. But to say things out loud and then, it's almost like you're throwing it out in the world, and then, of course, everybody in this room is going to think that there's something wrong, or there's, there's the propensity for, of course, people can do things that are not correct, but we all don't do that. Or, you know what I mean? I do things correctly. So I would like, I also would like the name and the address so I can follow up on it.
Okay, we'll give you the address after the meeting.
That's a fair thing to do.
Well, we also need information, response to a certain, I mean, now that Mr. McIntyre has raised it, we also need to end up having information to respond to a FOIA request, which was made to us from, from Councilman Bazey with respect to this list that he said he ended up preparing. Right now, we're in, right now, we're violating the law because we haven't ended up responding to it because we're not getting information from Councilman Bazey with respect to that. So, you know, it would be, it would be helpful for us to get this information.
See, that, it was information, I understand.
Got from the window.
He just walked up to the window and asked for a printout, and he gave it to him.
Give me all the houses that you guys gave permits for the last six months, I can pick them right now for you.
I don't want to speak out of turn, but you specifically said that you had at least 20 people that had contacted you saying that there was unfair practice in terms of permits, the way they were issued. So I immediately went over to the building department and I said, because I, I'm not, I don't work over there every day, but I want to know because it was brought up. There are different scales, so, so someone that, someone that does a huge expansive thing, all the permits are based on the cost of the project. There's a flat rate, and by the way, not all of you, but many previous to this, in There's a flat rate, and by the way, not all of you, but many previous to this, in fact, I think it was in 2011, approved the rates that are charged to the building department for permits. So, there's a flat rate, always forty dollars, and then, based on what the project is, then there's a, and then it's based on the cost of the project. Now, if somebody comes in and says, I'm doing a project, and it's, it's only going to cost me six hundred dollars, I guarantee you, most of the folks at the counter are going to say, okay, it's not really, it's kind of cost you a lot more than six hundred, just the material alone is probably going to be a thousand dollars. So, it's zero to a thousand is one fee, a thousand to two thousand is a higher fee, and it goes up that way. But again, with all due respect, Councilman Bazey, I, you had suggested we should do our own audit. That's tricky to do when you don't know what to compare it to. You know, like, I need to know what I'm looking at so that I can then pull some comparables and see if there's some kind of inferiority that you were suggesting, so.
I think I would have him just pull the six months, and then help sit down with you.
Just give me six months, I would love to sit on with you, and I can show you where everything's at. Just give me the last six months with of, I'm sure there's not that many homes that have been built for the, for the last six months, right?
Well, Council, Councilman, are you saying then that you don't have any documents in your possession that would be responsive to the FOIA request?
I don't have anything, right?
Okay, then allow us to respond.
Okay, so if you, if, again, if you go pull right now, everything that was, been built for the last six months, I can sit on with you anytime, Mr. Miyake, and I'll, I can show you. And if there's anything, I mean, you can look at that, I'm sure there's not that many homes that have been built for the last six months, right?
But our obligation is to produce a record, if, if there was a record that you're relying on, I was under the impression that there was such a record. If there is no, no such a record, then that's how we respond.
If you had a record and you wouldn't share it with me, you told me to go do an audit.
I said-
You said you had twenty names in a record, so, once again, I'm not going to use the word, but it's becoming more and more obvious.
Well, it's an easy thing to just go pull-
Just give me the last six months with of audit.
And then sit down with him. I would do that, Jack.
Confirming email and responding to the FOIA request.
It would be appropriate for you to sit down with the director of that department.
I'll sit on with anybody, just give me the last six months with of home improvement.
It's not my turn to talk, this is my concern. I just had twenty-one thousand dollars taken away from me a second time.
Okay, at this point, you're out of turn, there is a point where you can come up and speak.
Okay.
At this point, this is comments from council members at the table.
That's all I got.
Any other, yeah, this is comments from the council members only right now, Councilman Wenzel.
We voted on that budget amendment tonight, and there were some things in there that I, some that I wasn't in favor of, some I was against, and because of that, I couldn't approve it, the raises, so I just want to let everybody know that we've been assured that we're going to revisit each one of these individually, and, believe me, I'll do everything in my power, if, if you deserve a raise, you'll get a raise. And I'm challenging the city council members to spend as much time as they did on this thing, to go through the hundreds of line items in our budget to find ways to reduce the budget, instead of just picking out someone's salaries right off the top. Let's put some effort into digging deeper, a little bit harder things to do, to, like Muscat said, you know, that the three thousand dollars for that repair, I mean, that's digging a little deep on his, congratulations on his behalf, that's three thousand dollars, may save us. So, it's up to us not to just get on the, the big high-profile things and cut slash there, it's up to us to dig down deep into the budget and find things that we could save money at, not just these high-profile items.
Okay.
And one other thing is, I want to, I'm on a little personal agenda here, is I like all the residents in Dearborn Heights, every night when it gets dark out, to turn your porch lights on. It's a way of deterring crime, if they, someone goes down the street and they see everyone's porch lights on, they'll tend not to go down that block. It'd be nice to see, see Dearborn Heights from the space station. So, I'm asking everyone to keep their porch lights on at night.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
Piggyback on Councilman Wenzel's idea about the porch lights, we had light up tonight one, one year, one day here a year ago. I, for one, have lights on the front of my house, and on the side of my house, and the back of my house, not only for my personal safety, but the personal safety of police officers, if I have to call them. I wouldn't want them to be running down the side of my house where it's pitch black, having one hand on a weapon and one hand on a flashlight. I would rather them concentrate more with a lit area, so, that goes for everyone, for everyone's safety, and for our firemen and our first responders, the policemen and the firemen too.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Constance.
Last week, I attended, and some of the other council persons from Dearborn Heights and from Taylor attended the meeting on the Van Born corridor, and improving Van Born, a lot of exciting things talked about. Van Born has lost a lot of the anchor businesses that Van Born once had. We're seeing now the Ford workers parking in the Kmart parking lot and using the Masco facility, so I look forward to seeing that development get started. One of the buildings on Van Born is a commercial office building that my dad built over forty years ago, and is still there and been added on to, so I'm glad to see both cities are addressing the vacancies on Van Born Road.
Councilman, can you give us a brief synopsis of what happened in the meeting?
We talked about the different options, talked about the, the large number of traffic accidents on Van Born, and, as you know, partly, you know, possibly, everybody knows, the area was once a lot of overflow, machine shops and tool and die shops, there's still a few welding shops on Van Born, but a lot of the storefronts are vacant. They talked about making the area more walkable, about the, doing something to improve the drainage of the stormwater, and we had the input from residents, Chris Sullivan was, our former personnel director was there, Councilman Abdullah was there, and the mayor Taylor was there, our mayor was there.
Council Chair, one more-
Councilman Muscat.
This past Sunday, my family and I were traveling Van Born, and there was a business there that does detailing, had a big gala going on, had cars parked all on the city side of the sidewalk and all of that. Did they have to have a, I didn't call anybody because I wasn't sure, I didn't want to just sound a red alert, but did they have to have permits to hold stuff like that, like car shows and parking vehicles like that?
Yes.
So, they would have to have a permit for that, and-
It's an event on their, if it deviates from their site plan, then they have to-
Okay, I wasn't sure, I didn't call anybody, I didn't, you know, it didn't look like it was out of hand or anything, so, but just to know that they do need a permit, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Madam Chair, to follow up on the Van Born corridor, and I'm glad that Councilman Abdullah and Councilman Constance were there, both city councils in Taylor and Dearborn Heights have a very key role, so we will need to have you all brought up to speed because there's a lot of ordinance and other changes that will be necessary, because Van Born corridor, we need to, both communities, work on a joint project, and we're going to need to do some funding of it, but also the zoning, the signs and everything else, we want to give it an identity. I thought that it was a great presentation, there was individual role modeling for all of the people that were there, and that was extremely important. People spoke up as to what they liked and didn't like, and with all that information, it's being taken back and will be put together in a, in a plan. One of the, one of the, or two things that are really fortunate, one is both Taylor and Dearborn Heights have a common planner, it's Wayton Trim's Impact Division, so it's much easier to get conformity, and I think the other thing is that many of the elected officials in Taylor and Dearborn Heights are good, close friends. I enjoy Mayor Solers immensely, consider him a very good friend, and I, I'm just so excited. This coupled with next month, I'm going to come back to the council, or at least in the next two months, and talk about Ecorse Creek, and I hope both these projects can take off prior to the end of the year. The other thing I want to mention, that on Monday night, I was at an event, which I thought was extremely important, it's a beginning, but at Divine Child, there was a partnership with the Archdiocese of Detroit and the Islamic Center of America, the Islamic House of Wisdom, and the Muslim Immunity Center, and it was a conference on sharing our lives, the Muslim-Catholic dialogue for greater understanding. And I think anybody that attended that particular event found it immensely beneficial, and I think that that kind of dialogue amongst interfaith groups is extremely important. We all live in a common community, both in Dearborn and Dearborn Heights, and the better we know our neighbor and accept our neighbor, the better we can grow and prosper as a community. And I want to compliment all of these groups for putting that on, and I wish it had been double-attended what it was, but there was a good attendance, it was an excellent program. I compliment all those who put it together.
Okay, any other, or, Mr. Clerk?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We're a month and a half away from the elections, we're in the process of, we just got the ballots and processing the absentee ballots, we anticipate sending those out on Thursday, I believe, October the fourth, which will be before the next council meeting. Please, once again, allow three to four days to get your ballots. The mail is tenuous at times, sometimes people in the same household, one gets a ballot, the other one does not. If you do not get your ballot by early the next week, and you have already applied for an absentee ballot, certainly call us immediately. Do not wait, do not wait till the last minute, we can, we can fix things if you call us early, on the number seven nine one thirty-four thirty-two. A couple of other issues, the deadline to register to vote is Tuesday, October ninth. Please, please, if you want to register, if you want to vote in this election, register to vote before October the ninth. If you are going to be away and you need an absentee ballot and you are not registered, please register at a government facility. If you register by mail on your first election, you are required to vote by law in person. So, if you know you're going to be away, come on into our office, Monday through Thursday, Secretary of State, any Health and Human Services, any government office, and that will take off that requirement. Finally, the Court of Appeals recently ruled that straight voting that was passed a couple years ago by our legislature will not be occurring in this election. So, if you know what I'm talking about previously, you could just circle, one circle, and you could vote for all the members of that particular party, that will no longer be available. Please know that, please take care. The ballot is two sides, there's three proposals, there's some very important things you can do to help out for Election Day. The first is, please know where you vote. Call us, seven nine one thirty-four thirty-two. If you're not sure where you vote, call us. If you have computer access, you can go to our website, you can go to the Michigan Secretary of State, there's a little application where you can put your name and your birthday in, it'll tell you if you're registered and where to vote. There's nothing more important than knowing where you're going on Election Day. It's sad when people show up somewhere and they're, they're not eligible to vote at that particular location. The other thing is, once again, there's differing, you can read differing stories on what the length of taking to vote will be increased by the straight voting, but certainly there will be some increase in time at the polls. So, be prepared ahead of time. You can certainly bring a cheat sheet, you can, you can have the people you want to vote on the phone. People tend to vote in these type of elections, they, they'll vote the governor, the senator, and when you go down the ballot, you'll see the drop-off is dramatic between the percentage of people that vote for the top offices, and then they drop off, we have, you know, local races, county races, and proposals on the back. So, please be educated ahead of time, and that will, that will help dramatically be successful when you come to vote. Once again, any questions at all, seven nine one thirty-four thirty-two. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any other comments from council members? At this time, I'm going to open up to public announcements.
Hello, Council Chair and Mayor, just want to talk quickly about a couple of things at the library. First off, next week will be our Fall Book Sale. Join us next Thursday, October fourth, from ten to eight P.M., and Friday and Saturday, October fifth and sixth, from ten to four P.M. at Carolyn County Library, as we open up the Friends Vault doors and put up for sale all the literary treasures inside. So, come on out. On a more somber note, switching gears, I just wanted to pass along condolences to the family of Joan Smith, a longtime library employee who recently had passed. She was a good soul and will be missed by staff, so. That's all for now, thanks for your time, and see you at the library.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Madam Chair. My name is Joe Hashem, I'm the Director of CDBG. I'd like to thank a few councilmen and councilwomen who have called to our office for various information. We always have an open-door policy, we're always eager to help, in fact, we like to, and we are proud of what we do. So, I'd like to extend an invitation to every city council member to please, if you cannot make it to our office, give us a call, we're there to help, we can tell you about our program, what we do, and what is it that we do every day. That's on one thing. The other thing I'd like to report, that we did have our internal audit from the federal HUD last week, and we did come up clean. In fact, we were, our budget was increased by ninety-five thousand dollars.
That's right.
Very proud of that, very proud of my team, and hopefully, we'll be there for you and for the residents. Our office number is three one three, seven nine one thirty-five hundred. Have a great day, everyone, have a great night.
Thank you, Joe. Mr. Hashem, you've always been very kind and open arms when I, when I came here, thank you.
Go ahead, please.
Good evening to the mayor, to Council Chair, and to the council members and residents of Dearborn Heights. I'm Pastor Olvella Davis, and I am the founder of the United Communities of America. We are a nonprofit organization, we're focused on the reduction of crime through the promotion of peace, healing, and positive change. We have asked different cities, including Detroit and Ferndale, River Rouge Westland, Ecorse, Romulus, Wayne, Jackson, to offer us a testimony of resolution and a proclamation from the mayor's office, and I'm holding here a copy of our latest one, which is from Ecorse, Michigan, and what we're asking is that you would join with us, we are asking that you would adopt the twenty-second of every month as a citywide day of peace and healing. Our goal is to create a consciousness against violence at least one day a month. So, on the twenty-second, if you'd circle your calendars and create a consciousness of peace in your circle of influence, we may can create a more peaceful environment. But it's not just so that we can just have a testimony of resolution, but we actually have a youth violence prevention program that we have tried as a pilot in two schools, in River Rouge and Romulus High School, and the goal was to get the students to compete for a day of peace, to ask them, how could they create a culture of calm on the twenty-second at their schools? And they both came up with different ideas, and we actually had a competition for points, they could earn scores on points for different things, like peaceful Facebook posts, instead of using the Facebook and Twitter for negative, use it for peaceful, and every peaceful, peaceful post would get you points. And we found that on the twenty-second, both schools reported no violence, both schools reported no suspensions, no fighting, and that was a pilot project that we tried. So, now we have a community partner with UAW, and they have decided that they want to sponsor the program, and they have selected Ecorse High School and Robishaw High School to bring the Students for Peace program to these two schools to compete. Ecorse has adopted the twenty-second, and so we would like for Dearborn Heights to adopt it, this same proclamation, so that your students will know that this is officially a no-violence day, and for them to create a consciousness about how they can have a culture of calm in their schools. I was with Robishaw today, I'll be with Ecorse tomorrow, and we talked with the students and the principals, they were extremely excited about the opportunity, and it's a great way to implement peace in the schools without trying to tell the students what they need to do, but they actually tell us what they can do, which is why we're getting results. So, we're asking if you all would, we actually sent a copy of the proclamation to Council Chairwoman, and I've made a couple of other phone calls to the council people here to ask them if they could adopt this proclamation, because you do have it in your email, and we would just ask if you would just copy it and just put Dearborn Heights in it where you see the other city, and we would appreciate that, and we can go forth with our program. Thank you.
Can you send a copy to me and you can get my document, my proclamation also?
Thank you, yes, I will, yes, thank you.
Wonderful idea, and I hope you reach out to all the schools in Dearborn Heights.
Well, that's our goal, we, we have a lot of work, and again, it's, we're called the United Communities of America, so our goal is to have a model programs that we can, not just here in our own state, but across the country, so. But actually, our next stop is going to be Warren, where we just had the Fitzgerald murder at, that's our next stop.
I will do my best to attend the next school district meeting and pass that along to one of the school districts, and then see if I can get to all of them, maybe I can pass them along also.
That is greatly appreciated. We did meet with the Superintendent Talison and Ecorse Simmons, I think is his name, the superintendent, and so they have supported the schools in their district, but of course, I mean, we want to be in every district so that we can at least enlighten them about our program.
Great idea.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public announcements at this time?
Madam Chair, maybe excuse us for a second, please.
Oh, yeah.
This is public announcements.
Good evening, my name is Neda Pigian.
I'm sorry, at this point, do we have any more community announcements?
Oh, no, I don't have an announcement, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay, but, no, if nobody else, stay there a minute, is there any more community announcements? Okay, we can close that down, okay, now we can move on to public comments, go ahead.
Sorry. As a state-licensed architect and professional community planner, my primary interest is in ordinances, their improvement, their correction, their addition to improve the city. So, I'm going to make- So I'm going to make a couple of comments pertaining to ordinance. The pictures that I've given you are pertaining to, for lack of a better word, ballards or mailboxes built on the city right-of-way and a fence that's not built correctly. I'd like to bring to you, and as well, a very short thing. Four of the councilmen are new, they may not be aware, that this council passed an ordinance that there would be no clothing or shoe boxes in the city. Presently, there's many. I don't have a picture of one, and I don't want to identify them here, but make it your business to find them. Unless you change the rule, they're all over the place. Make sure they are removed. The issue that I'm concerned about this evening is the city streets, like in my neighborhood, I'm sorry I didn't mention, I live on Rosetta in Military Hills. The street right-of-way is 60 feet. The street pavement itself is only 27 feet, which means about 12 and 1/2 feet on either side of the pavement is city property. If you look at that drawing, you'll see a fence being built in the city right-of-way. It's a beautiful fence. Actually, it belongs, I'm agreeing with decorative fences, but they have to be built beyond city property. The ones you see of masonry constructions built in people's driveways are not only illegal, but there should be, because they're dangerous. If you allow a resident to build a construction on city property, obviously without a permit, and a car comes by and hits it, and somebody gets killed and damaged, and you're always talking about transparency, you know those little meetings you have in the back room, and everybody wants to know what you talk about? That's when we're being sued. And every time we're being sued, from my experience, the lawyer comes and says, "Well, if we don't settle for $50,000, it's going to cost us $100,000 to fight this. Let's just pay the $50,000." Well, if somebody gets killed running into those masonry obstacles that are built in the city right-of-way, which means you must have approved them being there, they're on your property, you're going to pay. You want to save a couple thousand dollars here and there, you're going to save a lot of money. Those ballards, those constructions do not belong on the city right-of-way. The first 12 and 1/2 feet either side of the street, city property.
Three minutes.
If you look at one of those photos, you'll see completely wild trees and bushes. The owner of that property didn't like that. He removed them, which were all on city property, and built an illegal fence.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Chair, anytime something like this comes up, I get phone calls all the time about stuff like, first thing that comes out of my mouth, "Have you called the ordinance department?" You got to call them first. You can't call me, can't come here without calling them first. If they don't know about it, they can't fix it. So that's one thing. Now, if there's multiple calls, nothing happens, then obviously, we have an issue, and I don't know how much I can do, but we could also bring it up and discuss it here in public. But the ordinance department first has to be told about it so they can go out and investigate and do what they do and what they're supposed to do. If we don't tell them, they can't do a thing.
Okay. Any other public comments? Please step to the microphones, state your name, address, and three-minute limit.
My name is Ed Froelich. I reside on Robin Dale Street. My concern is by water, sewage floods, okay? Last week, we had rain, we had a flood. I called on that, and he says, "Oh, check into that," okay? I went, put my boots on, because nobody came out, and started clearing by the sewer. There are three sewers by my house, okay, where the Dearborn Heights Animal Hospital is, and the leader is, okay? The water from the animal hospital comes down to the street, from the gutter where the leader used to be. The water comes also from there, okay? Then you got, on our street, it's got like a, from Warren, and that, like a dip, and that comes down, okay? Then you got a flood. I addressed this before, and when we cleaned this, what do you call it, sewers, okay? At least you should clean it at least once a year, okay? And my backyard is the same thing, okay? My backyard, Councilman Dave Abula saw my backyard, and I put a lot of work in it, okay?
Beautiful yard.
My backyard was half-full of water, okay? The house is built there, but the sewers need to be cleaned. There's a sewer in his yard now, because there's a house that was built, there's a sewer in the alley. And then, besides where the leader is, you got asphalt going down into the sewer, okay? You got gravel, that's because it's not graded by my house there, the alley part. All that's going into the sewer. That sewer needs to be cleaned. When I called today, and that, I get an answer like this, "We're manpower shortage." How the heck can you be manpower shortage? And you're talking about racist baloney, okay? You take care of the stuff that needs to be addressed. That water was all the way down to the fourth house, and I said to him, "You need to get somebody down here, because if it rains any harder, you're going to have the water all the way down to Hess," okay? And nobody was, she says, "Oh, tell Don Zimmer, the water department," okay? And you're talking about racist, don't talk to me about racist when you can't even take care of the sewers. Take care of the sewers and the problems that I have, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Because I do a lot for the city. I go around, I pick up the papers, and that, Ray Muscat would tell you that. I take pride in my city, and that, and you should see my front, what I did. And all my flowers came up on the front that I put in there, okay? Who's going to pay for that damage if I can't revive? Good thing I have a green thumb that I can revive them, okay? But I'm just giving you an example. That's baloney, okay?
Okay, thank you very much.
I could attest his backyard will give English Gardens competition. Beautiful backyard.
Okay, state your name, address, and three minutes, please.
My name is Charles Bonzon at 5730 North Silvery Lane. I'm greatly disappointed in the city. I don't know how you guys approve building permits and allow them to build so close to adjoining properties. Last November, you seen in Dearborn driveway collapsing because of construction next door. Well, come over and see my driveway, it's beginning. They built so close on a sand-based lot, and not today's rain, rain two weeks ago is already starting to slide in. Last week, it's already under my driveway. My driveway is about two years old this month. It hasn't even settled yet. You can compact it from the side. I don't know who's going to replace it. I'm here to make a public record. I don't know where to go. I'm asking for your advice. In addition to some of the flooding problems, I've noticed just in the last couple of weeks, I don't want to be a building inspector, but I've seen on multiple occasions with the rain, these contractors are pumping the water out into the city, into the city sewers. Today was appalling at Silvery Lane and Richardson, where the street was already flooded, it stopped raining. They had a pump down there pumping more water on top of the road to begin with, and it's reckless. I don't know who's monitoring these sites, but it's a problem. But I'd like to thank Mr. Dan Plutko. He did call me today, because I was to his office last week, and there was one site that was no barrier around it, within a couple hundred yards of a school. A hole was dug, and a child six, seven feet from the sidewalk could have went to go look in and fallen in the hole. The city's approving these plans. My driveway wouldn't be eroding away if it wasn't for you guys approving these plans. I want to know who replaces my driveway.
The city council does not approve those plans. That's coming from...
Well, the ordinances, sir, the ordinances, I believe you guys approved.
Correct. You are 100% correct.
And so I was told that this house was within ordinance, didn't need any variance, nor any notification to the adjoining property owners. I can only take that building inspector's word for that, but somebody is allowing them to build properties, these houses, you know, right on top of the neighbor's property.
If I may, real quick.
And it's an ordinance.
So first, the one, the first one you're speaking about, I was out there today, I took about 20 pictures.
Which one was that?
The 57...
5730?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, he's looking it up, and I appreciate you phone calling me. We had a meeting to address that, because one had no fencing around it. Mr. Bonzon's driveway is, I would say, I couldn't get down the particular area, but it looked like a foot or two of the sub-land dirt underneath his driveway is gone.
Yep.
So he has a serious problem, and I told, the building director indicated to me that that has got to get fixed, that you've been hurt by this, and we got to get it fixed for you, but I'll let...
Yeah, so I was out there. It's definitely absolutely correct. He's got a really nice new driveway. They're not actually building that close to his property line. What's happened is they've dug that much close to his property line. So the permit for the home isn't necessarily going to be that close to your property. They've taken the liberty of digging farther than they should have. So if you noticed on that placard out front, there was a stop-work order applied there.
But that stop-work order was there last week, and they were there working there this week.
Right. So as soon as that happens...
So they ignored it.
Oh, yeah. All the time they do that. In fact, but let me explain something. A permit can be issued, but then we don't have someone to go and monitor it 24/7, just like, you know, there's been folks that have said recently on Facebook, "The street sweeper doesn't come down the street." Well, it does, but I mean, it's not going to stop people from still putting things out there, and we can't sweep it every day. We did go there today. We rely on people calling us when things like that happen. The builder and the owner of the property closest to you have been notified that they can't do any more work there. The building inspector, Larry, is supposed to be going out there tomorrow to evaluate what's going on there. They clearly, I'm not, I'm not a building person, engineer, but you can just with your own eyes see what they've done. There was a line that they were supposed to dig at, and they went further than they should have, and it's compromising your driveway. It's also inhibiting people from walking down the sidewalk. They didn't pull any backfill away, which they're required to do. They're supposed to take backfill away, and then if they need it to come back, they can bring it back. So they failed in all kinds of accounts there. So the one further down the street from you at Silvery Lane and Richardson, I issued a stop as soon as we got a call that they were pumping in the street. We went out there, I issued them a stop-work order. They had to stop. It made the owners very upset, because they were paying these contractors to be there to lay the foundation. But they can't operate there unless they have fencing, and that little plastic fencing is not acceptable. Mohammed and I have talked about that on many occasions. They have to put steel fencing up that will truly prevent, you know, an accident from happening, somebody going there. So today, those folks at Silvery Lane and Richardson were at a fence shop, and in fact, they even called my desk to find out what type of metal fence was required, so...
The fence is up, because I drove by it on the way to the meeting.
Yeah.
Okay.
But in addition to those fences, shouldn't there be a silt fence there to keep all that stuff from running off onto the sidewalk and adjoining properties?
Well, as I, one of the things I said is, and I called Mohammed from the site, and I said, "They didn't pull any backfill out of here at all. They dug it up and they thought..." And that's been kind of common lately. They don't want to pay the extra expense to, you know, haul it away and store it somewhere and then bring it back. So there's way too much dirt on that job site. That's the problem. And so even a screen, a silk screen is still going to not prevent that from, it's oozing through the fence, the one by your house.
What are the penalties? What are you guys doing about this? This is not the first site, and it probably won't be the last site.
Right.
And they ignore stop-work order signs, and I pointed it out to the builders the morning before I left to work, and by the time I came home, there was all kinds of work done at the site.
Yeah. Well, the more that, the more of these stop-work orders we do, I think it's more effective. I think people understand that we're not, we're taking it very seriously.
I don't, I don't know how it's effective if I point it out and I see all kinds of work done during the day.
Right.
It's not that hard to monitor, just to drive by and see what's going on at the site.
Sure. But I mean, I could drive by there every day at 8:00, but they might not get there till 10:00. I'll be the first one to say that there's no way I can do my job by myself. I'm on Facebook 24/7. People are alerting me to things that are happening. I'm going out at, you know, 2:00. I mean, I sat here at one of the council meetings, I put a hoodie on to go see if a light was shining at 2:00 in the morning one time. We rely on people, hashtag, "It takes a village." We got to work together on this stuff, and we are fully aware of what's going on next door. I've already let the building director know that there's a major problem going on next door to you, and they're going to be out there tomorrow to address it.
I think there's got to be some training for these ordinance officers. A guy walked across construction material outside the construction site to put a notice on there to them to clean up something else on the site. And he had to walk by the construction material to put that notice on the sign, but nothing stated about the construction material outside of the site. I don't have to become, you know, now I got to read to find out what's not being done, because I've gone to the building department a couple of times, and I'm not getting any answers, and I'm not getting any results either.
All right. Well, I spoke to the building director today. I went there myself. I took about 22 pictures.
And that's why I'm here, so I have a public record.
Okay, that's fine, and...
And I appreciate you coming by to take the pictures.
Yeah, and so, and the one near the school, I agree. The orange fencing is not going to work. I've already contacted the builder and told him he's got to get fencing up there, correct fencing tomorrow, so...
But then, you know, on the website, they talk about common sense. Common sense isn't pumping water out of a basement hole onto a street that's already flooded.
You know, I...
People should be fined.
At some point, I would, I would like to have an opportunity to talk about some of the things I've seen. I've witnessed people pour pot roast grease, walk it right out their front door, down their steps, down their sidewalk, and pour it into our, into our storm system.
And that shouldn't be allowed either.
You're right. And so what I'm most grateful about, and I want to end this on a positive thing, we are addressing it. The building department is fully aware of it. I brought it to their attention today. They're going to have someone out there tomorrow. But on a positive note, I appreciate you getting involved in this and making sure we're aware of it, because you have to, you have to communicate with us, everyone has to communicate with us for us to get these things done, so I appreciate it.
Councilwoman Hicks, Clayton?
Just for a follow-up, because what I'm hearing is, you know, the enforcement issues. My question is, like with the fencing, that's alarming, by the way, because I can see a child falling into that, and thank goodness no one was hurt. That's just unacceptable. But for people to sometimes pay attention, what are the penalties for that? Fines? What are we talking about? Where we can put some teeth into what we're doing here.
You mean for not having a permit?
Well, the...
Violation?
The water being pumped out into the street, everything this man's talking about.
So the pumping that occurred today, that I witnessed, is going to be no different than what Dover Grease. You are not allowed to pump things into the street. Now, he could, he could get permission from DPW to put a protective collection screen on there, because we know the water's got to go somewhere. The water would have ended up in our storm drain anyways, and there are mechanisms. And I asked the contractor that was pumping it, I said, "Are you aware that you can actually put a screen on here so that we don't end up with all this mud and sand in our..." The one by his house, you cannot even walk down the sidewalk. It's completely covered the sidewalk. It's oozing away from the construction site, so...
And what a nuisance, right? Nuisance to the neighbors and to the street and everything. So again, my question goes back is putting teeth into this, right? You know, because sometimes it's what it takes to get people's attention, to get it resolved.
Councilman Muscat?
You know, that, she hit the nail right on the head, and I can't tell you for how many years I've said, "We need to put teeth behind the ordinances we have." We go there, give somebody a $50 fine when they're building a $250,000 house. I could care less if he pays $50.
This is non-conformity to the neighborhood. It's over 5,000 square feet, and the houses in the neighborhood aren't even $1,000.
But I'm just saying, and it's a, you know, you got people working when stop orders, there's got to be something, Corporation Council, that we can do, other than just writing them a little $50 or $150 ticket.
We've had people arrested that were continuing to work when we've issued stop-work orders, so there is some teeth to it. We can, we can have people removed from the property. If we, if either Mohammed or myself issues a stop-work order, no one can be there working. So if we get a call that somebody's working, we can go over there and we can, you know, they can be there.
The thing is, we can. The thing is, the optimum thing is, we need to do it.
But the morning, the morning of, I showed it to the workers, I came into the building department on my way to work and told them, "There's a stop-work order. They're aware of it." And I told them, "There are people working there." And they worked all day, because there's a lot more work done that day than they had the last two or three weeks.
Yeah, and the, Rick Watlin, who's one of the building officials, he did let our department know. We went over there and got the information of who was working, and tickets are gonna be issued to them, so.
And Mr., Mr. Miatki, is, do you know if there's an ordinance that says we have to put like a cyclone-type fence up around construction? Because if there isn't, we need to have one put up and make it.
You adopt the Michigan Building Code by reference.
Correct.
There's Michigan Building Code 2009, Michigan Building Code 2012, that you've already adopted by reference in your ordinance.
You just gotta make sure that, you know.
Well, they're very difficult to find.
Yeah, well. And I don't know all those either.
The clerk is supposed to have three copies at, at his office for public viewing. I've read that one this afternoon.
And I just saw a house being built in my neighborhood. They actually put a cyclone fence up, which I was very happy one day before they started, but.
But they're supposed to contain the material on their site and not let it seep into the neighborhood.
I agree with you.
I agree 100%. And I have been coming down.
Councilman Conston.
And I'm glad there was some action today.
Thank you.
And I want to know, how, how does my driveway get, that issue gets resolved? Who do I, who do I follow up with?
Well, the, the building officials coming out there tomorrow.
Yeah, and. So I'll be working.
And I was, I was told that it's, that the city will make sure that you are made whole, and if, that is gonna be done by the building department, but I'll be more than happy to follow up for you if, if there is any concern. It's filmed, it's public record, and we had already talked because, like I said, you were the first stop I made, and then I'm glad you gave me the other ones, but I saw firsthand, in fact, one of your neighbors came out and I had a talk with him for about 10 minutes, but you weren't lying. You were absolutely truthful.
First conversation, thank you for coming out this afternoon.
Councilman Conston.
Yeah, you also have a cause of action against your neighbor and the contractor, and then you can make a complaint with the state of Michigan against the contractor's license for violating the building code, and the state will investigate, and then they'll pull his license.
I don't even know if there's any soil sampling done. I mean, the thing's all sand.
No, we want to help him out, so he doesn't have to go that route.
Councilman Abdullah.
Mr. Mayor, I just had a little question. I'm kinda concerned about the statement you made. You said, "We'll make it whole." I assume you're not talking about us as a city paying for this?
No.
If anything, it would be the person building next door.
Next door.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that because.
Yeah, and.
Earlier you said, "We'll take care of it." I just want to make sure.
Yeah, what I meant.
The gentleman doesn't get the impression that we as a city are gonna be paying for it.
No, the city.
Because I presume it'd be next door.
The city is gonna hold that particular contract.
It's possible.
To make sure that the damages that they've done to him. It is a brand-new driveway, and, and I was surprised because on the one site at Richardson and Silvery Lane, it was raining so hard. How do you work in that kind of conditions? I mean, the soil was super soggy.
I was driving around today, and, and I went up the street, and it was flooded, and I went to Menards. By the time I came back, it stopped raining. I come down Richardson, and they already had the pumps in the hole and flooding the streets some more.
Yeah.
And then when I talked to Jack earlier, and he caught them and indicated to them that this has to be filtered, our DPW's gotta prove it, you can't just, because all that soil then is going in the drain and got those one else.
That's in the building code, two silt screens over those.
I've also got a concern, you know, this stop work order being put in and, and contractors totally ignoring that is just, that can't be acceptable because, I mean, we gotta get word out that this is not gonna be acceptable in our city, and then whoever does it again, I mean, I don't know if we can do it legally, they can't even work in our city. That's, that's total disrespect.
You know, that's just, just like, you know, big national companies that, and reputable building companies, they do work in our city without permits all the time. Every one of them.
Why?
And that's a good question of, is why? Because, you know, again, they take, they take, they do a job, they don't pull a permit, but again, in, in fairness to ordinance department, they can't be at every single site in the city. So if we, we as residents take it upon ourselves to call on them, okay, then they'll have an idea of where to go.
Councilman Muscat, it, to have a fence around the site, it doesn't take anything to drive down the street and see three or four sites in five minutes.
I agree with you. I've said it before, these people are driving around, they're driving around the city, they should be able to spot this stuff. They should be able to spot that there's, you know, I know somebody's driven down Richardson and Silvery Lane. They have to have. Somewhere in the course of the last week or two, they had to have been by there. So it's just not driving with blinders on, it's also looking.
I only work a couple days a week. I'm retired. I watch them go by the site all day long.
I just, that's what I, that's what I'm saying, okay? So they too have, should be reporting it themselves too. But we need to help them also.
Daring to duty.
Okay.
A what?
At this point, we need to move on.
It's called daring to duty.
Thank you very much. Any other comments from the public? You have three minutes, state your name and address.
My name's Dana Parrish. I live at 5614 Greenlee Park. Good evening. I've been wrestling with how I'm going to address this issue for several days now, probably a few weeks. Not wrestling with my conscience, because when I decided to record my conversation with Mayor Paletko and Mr. McIntyre from ordinance, it's because I have a 14-plus-year history of false and misleading statements when dealing with the city. I did my homework. I looked up the applicable laws on recording conversations between individuals. I was one of the people who was involved in the conversation, and I was aware it was being recorded. I also spoke to a representative from the Michigan Attorney General's Office in Lansing to see if any decisions had been made to overturn Michigan Appeals Court case Sullivan versus Gray, 1982, or Swan versus Maxi, 2001. And I discovered that the decision of the Michigan Appeals Court still stands as long as one party in the conversation is aware that they're being recorded, and the provisions of MCL 750.539D, that's eavesdropping, do not apply, and it's not a two-year felony. And obviously, I wasn't arrested, nor has any warrant for my arrest been issued, and since we had a room full of police officers here that day, and the chief of police was here that day, I haven't, I still haven't been arrested. So let's get to the city council meeting on September 11th, 2018, at about 10:25 PM. Right after the meeting adjourned, I walked outside the council doors here. I was saying goodbye to some people that I had spoken with, and I was approached by a councilman, I'm not gonna mention any names here. He asked me, "Does the mayor know you were recording him?" I said, "No." He then said, "Well, I'm an attorney, and you know that it's a two-year felony to record someone without the knowledge, right?" Mind you, he said this loud enough, and there were several witnesses around that heard him, including the council for the city of Dearborn Heights. I said, "You're wrong." We had a lengthy exchange back and forth about seeing the device, the recording device or not seeing the device. He showed me the law, which he had looked up prior to, to meeting with me, and he had it captured on his phone, which is MCL 750.539D. It's the law on eavesdropping. I'll pass it around to you. It's actually a law that was passed in 1931. It's not applicable in this case at all, and definitely not applicable in the case of a public official holding a meeting with a taxpayer. The councilman asked me if I wanted to send him a copy of, of the law via email. At first, I said, "No," but then I thought, "Why not have him send it to me?" I could then send him a reply with the information that I already had, that wasn't available to me right, right at the time, on the appeals court cases. I was pretty upset that the councilman would publicly defame me by accusing me of committing a two-year felony and further use his position as an attorney to substantiate his position. I went home and immediately pulled up the information I had and sent a reply to the councilman by email. I did this at 11:21 and 11:28 on September 11th, which was the count, the date of the meeting. I showed him the Michigan Appeals Court cases, the Maxi case and the Sullivan case. I received a reply from the councilman on September 12th, the next day, at 8:00 PM. In the email, explained the process for demolishing the property at 5666 Greenlee Park, which is what this meeting was about. And then it explained that, quote, "There was a lot of legal steps that the city must go through in order to demolish someone's property," unquote. However, it's not someone's property, it's city property. He also said, quote, "Instead of coming to the city council meeting, you can contact me and I will keep you updated on the status of the demolition of the now city-owned house," unquote. Trust me, I have no intentions of not coming to city council meetings. To my right, as a, as a resident, taxpayer, and citizen of the United States, oversee the workings of city government. I came here for one reason this evening, and that's for an apology. I've made mistakes, and I'm gonna continue to make them, obviously. But I don't use my position, haven't used my position of authority to make false statements about anyone. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilman?
Well, the conversation was with me. No one said anything about a felony. You live a block over, I'm familiar with the property. I did go out and look at it, but, but you, you asked, I showed you the law, I didn't look the law beforehand, I'm familiar with the law, and I showed you on the phone, and then I asked if you wanted me to send it to you, and I said, "Yes," but nobody said you were guilty of any two-year felony or anything, and.
You did say it was a two-year felony. There were people standing next to me, and they talked to me afterwards, and they asked me if I was concerned about the fact that you said to me, "You know that's a two-year felony." And there were other people that heard you.
Okay, at this point, I think you two need.
And I apologize, I was trying to explain to you, you were talking about other people filing lawsuits against the city of Dearborn Heights at the meeting, that a demolition takes time. If you're gonna demolish somebody's property, it takes time. The city's had lawsuits against it for demolitions, that's all.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other public comment?
Good evening again, Zuhair Abdulha, 354 Rosemary. And I hope you bear with me, and I'm not trying here to insult anybody or anything, but I just want some facts to be known to everybody. A few years back, our mayor overcharged the residents over $3.8 million on the CSO. If the charges were made knowingly.
Chair, I thought you said at the beginning of the meeting, "No personal attacks."
Yes, and I did.
I'm not attacking Mr. Mayor.
Are you stating facts, or are you attacking?
I'm stating the facts. I'm not saying anything insulting or anything. Those are facts. If we go back.
No, they're not.
We have been overcharged on the CSO, and I don't want to go over this. If you don't want to hear me, Mr. Mayor, you're free to go.
No, I just want you to be accurate. You're not accurate, and it's a personal attack.
If I'm not accurate, you have the chance to say that the number was wrong, or we did not.
You don't listen.
Charge.
Okay, let's not make it towards any one person.
I'm not making it personal. There is veto which was sent to you, and the veto claimed that, basically accused the council of being ignorant. The word was used, and that bothered me very much. If somebody charges the residents, you know, overcharging for four years on a bond which was paid in full, if they don't know, that's not good. And if they done it intentionally, that's a disaster. Now, we tried to create a job, or we tried to give increases in the budget to three heads of department where there was an ordinance prevent that increase to happen. The city council didn't know, probably in your good conscience, you almost approved it if it wasn't for some people directed you or gave you, you know, the light where, where to go and not to give those raises. Now, some jobs were tried to be created for some people, which I believe they are not qualified, and a while ago, it cost the city one job over $200,000 in litigation. The surplus in the city claiming to, "We have two million," okay, if I'm taking too long.
Got 30 seconds more.
Anyway, in short, I don't think you are ignorant. I think you are the smartest city council I have seen in 15 years. And calling you that you're ignorant is insulting to every resident because you do your homework, you ask, you research, and I know for a fact you spend lots of times on everything. In the previous years, yes, we had a city council where the mayor enjoyed the majority of four city councils. Some of them went to sleep on the seat sometimes. Unfortunately, now, we have smart people on the city council, and I thank you for everything you do.
Thank you very much. Any other public comment?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Meeting done.
We had one more person.
Oh, I'm sorry.
One more person.
Oh, go ahead.
All right, good evening. I, I've stated this before when I've been up here before, and a lot of people know that my dad was a Dearborn Heights police officer, and my mother, I used to come here a lot when I was a little kid. I had five brothers, and she would intentionally make us look cute so that we could, she could try to get things accomplished. That was back in a time when they didn't have like survival benefits, and I have a sign, a newspaper clipping that my brother has that I'm holding that says, "While my dad is taking care of you, who's gonna take care of us when, if something happens to my dad?" Something did happen to my dad while he was working, and he was off work for over a year healing himself, but fortunately, he survived and. It seems to me like, looking back, it was irritating because I would rather have been home watching cartoons or something, but my mother stressed to us how important it was. And to me, looking back now, I thought, "Well, that was super legitimate." And I'm not minimizing anybody's issues. I have a concern that, especially because I spend so much time on Facebook, I'm really concerned about throwing things out there in the world and just letting them land where they land. I think if people are gonna say something, there should be a purpose. I was a huge, in fact, back when Liz Agius was the council chairperson, I remember saying to her one day, "I don't think anybody should come to this podium with an issue or complaint unless they have a way to resolve it." Because I think what it does is it gives people an opportunity that they normally wouldn't have to get things done. I, I don't know anything about who is listening and, you know, being recorded. I remember a conversation that took place in the mayor's office that said, "We purchased this house with the intention of taking it down because we had spent years trying to get the owner to take this house down." That's the goal. That's really what the goal is. All the other stuff is just like clouding things, right? We can do better. We really can do better. And it's just a suggestion, I'm gonna put this out there. I worked at Comerica and I retired from there years ago. I'm technically a double-dipping jack. Because I have a pension out there from Comerica, and I'm also collecting a salary here, working here. But we found ourselves so angry with each other as directors, and as vice presidents, and as managers, and as workflow coordinators, that our HR department finally stepped in and said, "It's starting to affect our work, our way of life." And I'm, I'm imploring this to you, that I think all of this frustration, anger, misguided accusations, and maybe on both parts, right?